I'll call to order the city council work session for City of East Grand Forks for August 23rd, 2022. It is now 5 o'clock. Would Senator Kirk please call, roll?
Ms. Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstein.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reifel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Satter.
Here.
Dale Helm.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demer.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Governor McCorum, number one, update from the Coalition. Marty.
Thank you, sir. Marty Seifer at the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Work with Fliridian Hood, doing their government relations, and East Grand Forks has been a longtime member of the Coalition, and we appreciate that. So I usually give an annual update sometime between July and September, whenever it works on the schedule to hustle around up here. And I, you know, I'm sure all of you already know that there isn't a lot to report. I have two handouts that I believe she handed around before the meeting to the members of the council. I'm going to mainly refer to the front and back-sided one that's like in a block chart that just talks about the outcomes of the session, which, you know, is a very short conversation because they really didn't pass a lot this year. We do what the Board of Directors tells us to do, so for the most part, Fliridian Hood will encapsulate everything from the fall conference. We will put it in priority order that the Board of Directors tells us to, and then lobby accordingly with the House, Senate, and Governor's Office and agencies. So local government aid, as you know, is always a high priority for our members. So there's a formula update that was worked out amongst the Coalition, Minneapolis, St. Paul, metro cities, small cities, league of cities, et cetera, et cetera. And we have some cities who don't like the formula change. So I mean, if you do have issues with it, certainly sound off at the conference and say, hey, we've got concerns about it. A $90 million appropriation increase would accompany that to try to update things and give people increases that were stable and predictable. The governor, and it was submitted to the Governor's Office, the Governor didn't propose any changes or appropriation increases this year. Technically, it's not a budget year, but they had plenty of money floating around there. The House did the formula and a $34 million increase. The Senate did not do either of those in their initial proposal, but when they went to conference committee, what they compromised on was not changing the formula, adding $30 million to the old formula, and then a hold harmless provision that all cities that might be going backwards on the old formula would be kept whole, which you guys are in that basket. You guys in Warroad and Detroit Lakes and some others. However, once the bill was agreed upon, they enrolled it, engrossed it, sent it back to the floor. It has to pass the House first and then go to the Senate, and the Speaker never brought the bill up, so the tax bill just sat on their desk and never got a vote. So what we thought was at least a compromise to move forward, keeping everyone harmless, and then adding some money on the old formula was at least something. They never voted on it, so now we're stuck with the old formula. There's no new money, and people that were going to go backwards go backwards. Nobody gets an increase unless there's some shifting within the formula, and that's the way it worked out there. The Public Facilities Authority has water infrastructure programs like sewer and water, water towers, sewer treatment plants and the like. PISig grant programs are contained in that. So you can look at the chart on the left of all the things we lobbied for. The Governor had $200 million total in the bonding bill. We thought that was a little on the light side, actually. The House and Senate never revealed their bills on the floor. The House had an initial proposal that was pretty heavy to the metro, just our, and frankly, that's not an opinion, that's a fact. Any neutral observer would have said that would have had a hard time ever passing the floor because it needs a 60% majority, and the rural people were not going to vote for it. They parked it in the Ways and Means Committee and never brought it further after that. The Senate never revealed their bill. Senator Bach wanted to negotiate it in private with Representative Lee, and they told us they got about 95% done with the bill and then never revealed it, never passed it, never brought it to either body of the floor. It would have been, the Constitution says bills relating to taxation and bonding have to originate in the House of Representatives, so the House never brought up either the tax bill or the bonding bill. So, final outcome, no bonding bill. We had a lead line mapping and replacement grant program for those cities that have a lot of lead lines, and they're, I think some of you probably read about Flint and some of these other cities with issues with lead. So we're trying to start identifying that and then work incorporate eventually into the bonding bill or replacement of that, at least going up into the stubs of the House. We had identified some money for that, but the Health and Human Services Bill never came to the floor. They got probably 85% done with the Human Services Bill and ran out of time. Child care facility grant program, we never found out what was in that. We were told $5 to $10 million was probably in there for us, but nobody knows because they never revealed the bill. There was no bonding bill, so that never passed either. The jobs bill, we had a childcare grant program for kind of training and business development that did not make it to the floor, but it was not contained in the final conference report anyway. On the backside, broadband is one of the bright spots. That was in the agriculture bill. That was the one finance bill that actually passed. And you might be a little startled at the final outcome is more than double of what we lobbied for, and the main reason for that is the federal government showered money upon the state of Minnesota specifically for broadband, and the state matched up some money for that, and we ended up coming out with a jackpot on that. Now there's been some issues with bureaucracy and getting bids let and getting this done, so we've had a kind of a slow slog on actually, on the administrative side administering this program and getting things moving, I'll put it that way. But they did actually get the appropriations done at least. BDPI, which I know has been used in this community, we never really found out what they were going to put in there. The rumor was $10 million to $12 million, but no bonding bill. We had a Greater Minnesota fix-up bill. We don't know if that was in the bill or not. No bonding bill. Public infrastructure grant, I suppose say grant, not grand, program, no bonding bill. Workforce Development Fund was not put in the final jobs bill, which didn't get voted on anyway. The transportation bill, you can kind of see the difference between large and small cities. You guys, I believe, fit in the large city basket of over 5,000. So they had a money that matched up with the feds plus some increase in the base. Actually, the Senate did better on that one. We lobbied for $25 million. Senate gave us a little under half of that. The Governor in the House had some matching federal money, but not really like new state money per se. But there was no transportation bill that was voted on, so it probably doesn't matter. On the small city side, which are those under 5,000, which is pretty much up in this area, you know, with the exception of you guys, Thief, and Crookston, probably, I think everybody's under 5,000. They had a dedicated amount of money from the Senate. They had a smaller amount from the House and the Governor, but no bill in the final conclusion. And then the Quarters of Commerce bill, we wanted $200 million of new money. That's for your major roads like your Highway 2 and 59 and ones like that that are interregional, go across the state, up and down, back and forth. The Senate probably did the best on that, but we ended up with no transportation bill at the end of the day. That one, you might recall, Quarters of Commerce, about two or three years ago, they took almost all the money and put it between St. Cloud and the Twin Cities, and the rest, the entire rest of the state got nothing. So that's why we were trying to statutorily get things in the language to spread it out, either by DOT district or something, but to have like two or three counties take all of it and have the other 84, 85 get zero, we didn't think is a fair process. So mainly Quarters of Commerce was intended to be a rural program, and we've been disappointed with how that's been administered. So we're working with the legislature to try to put some fencing around that to make sure it gets out to all of us. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions?
I know you're primarily in St. Paul, but you're also close to the political process in general. From the federal standpoint, what are you hearing as far as infrastructure dollars filtering into the area? Are you tuned in to any of that?
I know that fishbowl stammer have been trying to get their arms around how this money goes out. They don't really have the members of Congress get to decide how it's appropriated, so they give it to the bureaucracy. The federal DOT tries to filter it out. Part of that goes through the state. So they block grant it to the state. The state DOT wants to get matching money put together with it because there's a matching requirement for almost all of it, and then it's appropriated out. Because there is no DOT bill, that's going to wait until January for most of that money, frankly, and that's why you're not seeing a lot going on in Minnesota. Some of these states you hear about, hey, there's bridges getting replaced, there's stretches of roads getting replaced. What's going on in Minnesota? A lot of that is our session ended with no conclusion. And so money carries forward. It's not like we're going to lose it. But, you know, my suggestion to them is move this along in January, pick up where you left off. If the transportation bill is 90% done, start in January with where you left off and get this bill passed quickly instead of waiting till May, so we can get bids let and we can get construction company people lined up in the winter time, instead of waiting until May and then lining your bids up in June, July. By that time in Minnesota, the construction season's done. So I do have a contract with the Aggregate and Ready Mix Association, and they have the same concern is they need to front-load these bills that didn't get done. Like, they should be doing bond, next year's not really a bonding year, but because they didn't have a bonding bill, they should get moving along with that.
Anything that you can do for our staff as far as what you know to be the parameters and qualifications for, you know, programs and projects of ours that could probably qualify? Any of that that you can bring us up, we would greatly appreciate it.
For sure.
We've been dealing with a certain consultant also that feels like they can kind of open those doors a little bit and get stuff going. But any angle that we can take, we have so many needs in our community for infrastructure, industrial park, and plenty of other things, maybe even a roundabout, that if that could fit into there, that'd be great.
And make sure, what we have been telling people is between now and January, make sure you engage your legislators and actually get a priority list of like, here's the things going on in our community that we need, and make sure your district engineer at DOT is made aware of that. Because we had some issue down in my district, Wyndham. Mankato is the district office. I think Bemidji is your district office for DOT. You know, they're like, well, we didn't really know that you needed this, and it was a road that was a state road but went right through their town, and they had a high priority, they had a lot of traffic issues, and it was crumbling, whatever. And so there needs to be communication with those legislators and that district engineer. So put them all on a consistent memo of, so they're all on the same page. You know, I always like to say with elections, you don't know who's going to be in office, but the last I checked, Mark Johnson has no opponent, so I would be willing to bet there's not going to be someone getting 18,000 write-in votes. So, you know, you can start working on that now and engaging, even with the candidates. Just let the candidates know, here's, you know, here's what our priorities are. So whoever is running against Deb Keel or Burkle, you know, I always consider things by Senate district delegation. So, you know, whoever your A and B person is, you know, loop them in so they know what's going on. Their constituents come to East Grand Forks to go to Cabela's and whatever. So, you know, Burkle's going to, his people in Badger and Green Bush and stuff probably drive down here once in a while for various things, whether it's Cabela's or somewhere else. And they want to make sure they can get from A to B without knocking the transmission out of their truck. So I always say, loop in, you know, your whole delegation with what's going on.
Thanks, Marty.
David.
Just one question. So with the, so much getting left unfinished for this such a side of session and no special session, what you've been hearing is, are they, is there an appetite or a push? Are they getting pressure for, when they do come back in January, to pick up where they left off and get this finished, or are they, if they're feeling motivated?
There's a couple different factors. One is constituent pressure. In other words, folks like you need to be beaten on them, like, we want to see a transportation bill done quickly, a bonding bill done quickly, because it's important, you know, for all the reasons I listed, bid letting and, you know, just get these pressure valves relieved and whatnot. Part of it's political pressure of not waiting to the end. No, this is a budget year. They don't have to do bonding, but they do have to do all the other years, all the other bills or there's a shutdown. So last year, because we work on bienniums, there was no pressure that you have to have the budget bills done. So everything could just go on the cutting room floor and it didn't matter. So it's going to be constituent pressure to get people to say, hey, get this stuff done early, get an agreement. Part of this is politics, shockingly. You know, we have a Democrat House, a Republican Senate, a Democrat Governor now. We don't know, it could all flip around. I mean, we could have one of this and one of that, or all of one or all of the other. That's going to make a big difference, too. I, you know, I ran into Jensen at Farm Fest, and he said, I think we should be passing bills right away in January. Like, the House and Senate should be on 24/7 getting stuff done that they didn't get done this year. Walls, I think, is more deferential to the legislature. Let them kind of figure it out, and we'll take it as it comes. So everybody's got a different thought process, but if one of the bodies is one party and one of the bodies is the other party, I don't know that they're going to move things along quickly. If there's a trifecta on either Democrat or Republican side, you might see things churning out quickly, based on their ideology more so, of course. But there's not, there's no filibuster in Minnesota, so if one party controls everything, they can just ram through what they want, whenever they want.
Anybody else have anything? I don't see.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you much.
Thanks.
Give me a dollar if you need something.
Money.
Need money, all right.
Move on to number two, Arena Project Improvement Discussion. Reed.
Yeah, for sure. All right. Thanks, Mr. President, council members. Kind of a two-part agenda item tonight for discussion. First part of it, I asked Adam Davidson, he's with JLG Architects, to join us, and Scott Ward with B32 Engineering. B32 Engineering is the ice rink consultant that has worked with JLG in our recreation improvement project planning for the last few years. Kind of to wrap ourselves back to our strategic planning meeting we had in June, and we had a lot of questions and discussion about the ice plant at the VFW Arena and what potential options we might have, if we want to look at a shorter term, next year, a year and a half timeframe to start to make plans for improvements on that ice plant. Scott and Adam both have worked a lot on our system or understand our system, have been through it and know what it is, the direct R22 refrigerant. And they both have a lot of current day experience with current projects ongoing through the state of Minnesota and the region, projects that have recently been bid. So we, they have some real-life numbers of what those projects have come back as costing. And we'll give a little bit of a presentation or just a discussion on some of the different refrigerant options that may be available when we move away from R22 in the future. So with that, I think I'll just introduce Scott and Adam, and they can go through a little bit of a discussion on different refrigerant types, and then hopefully you guys all will have some questions for them that they can help answer.
Yeah, excellent. Thanks. We appreciate that. And thanks for having us here today, guys. Really appreciate the time. I'll begin here, and I'll let Scott, he's our engineer, so he's going to be more technical in terms of if you have any technical questions on the different systems. But one of the first things I want to kind of explain real quick here is the difference between the VFW Arena and the Civic Center and what you're seeing with some of those retrofit upgrades right now. The VFW system is what's called a direct system, which means it has one primary refrigerant that goes through the whole system. Some of you may know that, some of you may not. Where the Civic Center is an indirect system, meaning that there's two refrigerants, one in the refrigerant plant and then a secondary one that goes through the ice floor itself. It's important to know that because it does limit into what you can do with the system when it comes to replacement, upgrades, and retrofits. So when it comes to the VFW, and we talked about, well, what are some options we can do, it really comes down to four options that we can identify right now, three that we would recommend, one that we would not recommend. Let me start with the one we would not recommend, and then Scott, too, I know you're on, chime in if I screw up here or if you have to correct me. So, number one, the system we have right now with direct is we could look at potentially replacing the ice slab system, independent of the refrigerant system, and set that up for what's called an indirect system. To do that, though, we would need to retrofit or fabricate and update the existing system to accommodate that. It's really a short-term solution to do that. It may have a lower initial cost, but there's still going to be replacement costs for all of the equipment down the road within probably a five- to seven-year timeline. B32 has experience with those on past projects over the last two years. I think you're seeing less and less of that because another contributing factor to all of this is going to be into the environmental regulations that come with R22 and some of the limitations you have with that. It is an option. We proposed it for Reed. We understood that that's something we could do to give you the option of doing the slab first and the refrigerant plant second, but there are upgrade costs. And at the end of the day, it may be more costly just due to the fact you still will want to upgrade that refrigerant system and equipment down the road. The other options we have really kind of boil down to really two main things or types, excuse me. One is a synthetic refrigerant. The other is a natural refrigerant. And so we looked at really three here. We get into some numbers here that may be a little confusing, but some you may recognize. We look at R513A and R134A. These are synthetic options. R134A is something that we've done recently on Arena Color College. We see that around the region here, too. Of all the refrigerants that we have in here, it's probably the least environmentally energy efficient, has probably the largest global warming components to it compared to the other synthetic, which is going to be the R513A. Now, with these two systems, they come in commercial grade, industrial grade. And before I go down a rabbit hole with a lot of terminology, basically what we're saying there is that these would be a lower-cost option than what we proposed originally with the master plan and the facility plan of an ammonia system. I think you've all heard of an ammonia system. It's a natural occurring. I think it's one of the systems we see more often right now. Just for matter of fact, we're working on the Midco Arena for Augustine University in Sioux Falls will be an ammonia system. We have those systems in West Fargo, Bismarck, and in the area and the region, too, as well. The thing about that is that when it comes to serviceability, it comes to life cycle costs, it is a better system. However, if you have to look at first-time costs, it would be the more expensive option. So that's where we plug in the other two synthetic options. Scott, if you want to add on or if I missed anything important there for the group here to understand in terms of those three options there, please go ahead and chime in.
You ready to come up, Dan?
Yes.
Now, that was a great summary, so I don't have a whole lot to add. I mean, I will tell you, we design all those types, we design any type of serviceability, we provide options for you to achieve. As, you know, Reed said at the beginning, we have a lot of experience with all those types of systems. We design all of them, we license them, we have a lot of them, we have a lot of experience, and we just want to share that with you and answer your questions that you have.
And one thing to add on here as well is that we did prepare a comparison chart for Reed, and I know we didn't get in time for you all to have it here today, but we can follow up with you all with that to kind of give you an idea on how the three stack up against the other. And we do give a rating system. We look at things like energy efficiency, serviceability, global warming potential, first costs, et cetera, et cetera, to kind of give you an idea on how they rank together. If you kind of just really simply put out there a good, better, best scenario, you look at a good, that's going to be your R134A. You look at your better, which would be your R513A synthetic, and then your best would be your ammonia in the three options that we're looking at for indirect system. With that, I'll pause, stop talking, and just open up for any questions or comments for Scott or myself.
Mark.
Yes, thank you. As far as backend, kind of makes sense. How about like the frontend? Is there a difference in quality of ice for each of these, or?
No, the quality of ice would be.
Or ability to put it on and take it off quickly, or any of those? It's all the same. You just see some of these places that come out now, and they're, it seems like they're cold, or warmer ice, and they're always fixing them, and they're always, you know, is that what you're going to get with this stuff, or is it going to be good ice?
So all three systems are going to be brand-new indirect systems, and so they all will provide the same quality of ice, and they can all be set up and controlled in a very similar way. So no, you're not going to experience anything like that. It really comes down to how the systems will be operated in terms of the quality of ice you get, but all three can give you a very similar quality of ice. The difference is, is going to be in their operating efficiency, their serviceability, and other things of that nature, and that's where they really come in. For example, an ammonia system will be far more efficient than R134A, just when it comes in terms to how it operates, and then of course, your logical bills. So that's kind of where you'll see the main differences between the systems. And then cost.
Yeah, but we may see a little bit of difference in, that's a great summary, Adam, is the, your existing concrete floor, ring floor has, you know, a natural problem for our system. Steel transfers heat better than polyethylene. All the indirect floors that we install or design, most of them, except for the DHL or some, probably, but, and that doesn't transfer heat quite as well as steel does. So you may notice a little bit of reaction time difference between any of the three options that we provide for an indirect system versus your existing. But we try to compensate that by finding higher flow rates is one of the things to compensate for that, to get the heat transfer back up, you know, to what you're experiencing now. Put in a steel floor for an indirect system, you're looking at 300 or 400,000 dollars, which you can add. So that's why almost all community side is, you know, it's not.
Right. And I know we started up a little bit, too. I would add that we typically do not see a system like that within a community-style rink, just because it's usually cost prohibitive. Even in Division One rinks, which we do a lot of, we don't see even a lot of that depending on. So just to kind of put that perspective, the direct system we do have in VFW, which is past its prime, is like Scott was saying, is going to be more efficient in that capacity, but it's also using an older refrigerant that really is no longer being phased out. So, thanks, Scott, for that point.
Reed, John Anthony?
He answered what I was going to say.
Thank you.
How about?
Yeah, just.
Brian?
Yeah, question for Adam. I'm familiar with the ammonia system and the cost of the safety accommodations you have to make in the building to, you know, vent the cloud of ammonia. Is the, is the architecture of the VFW well set up to kind of retrofit that existing space to include that venting?
So for the most part, it's not set up to accommodate the required venting and the notification alarm systems you would need. That really comes a lot with the system itself. As far as code compliance, I think the construction type of the building would be easily retrofittable to accommodate that. But there would be some spatial considerations we'd have to make and look at to make sure. One simple thing is that you need to have a entry-exit vestibule to get into this. You just walk into the room, and that's because for control if there is any gas leak and things of that nature. So to answer your question is yes. It would be determined about what those impacts would be to do that. But there's really nothing there that would, that would eliminate us from accommodating that system at this time.
Okay. And then I guess it's kind of the same question, but on the operations side. If we were to go in with an ammonia system, are we staffed, or, you know, are we licensed and available and trained to, you know, operate an ammonia system with the people that we have?
Our current staff, no. In our current staffing, we don't have anybody that's been through any training or has any experience with an ammonia system. The U.S. Ice Rings Association has started to offer regular trainings for ammonia operations. The Minnesota Ice Arena Manager Association has a conference in September that they're offering a course on ammonia at it and have for the last few years. That would certainly be something that we'd be sending our staff to if we chose to go that route. The other question that I don't have an answer for, but is in my head, is on the service side of it, the service and maintenance side. You know, I don't believe that there's anybody locally in the greater Grand Forks area that would service an ammonia system. You know, with that said, the current service contract we have at the Civic Center and VFW Arena is coming from the Duluth area for a lot of the same reasons. It's not as much experience in that industrial-sized refrigeration system within the Grand Forks area. But that's a consideration, too, to look at. If we start to go down the road of ammonia, is where are the service people going to come from?
Just a follow-on question. What are other communities doing, you know, with similar projects? I think Herman or Hermantown had a, had a rink project. Do you know what type of refrigerant they went in with?
Good question, and I don't know that. You know, locally, more locally, and maybe Scott has some experience or some project experience in the region, too, to be able to add to it. But locally, I know that in Grand Forks, they've gone with R513A.
Do you know what type of refrigerant they went in with?
Good question, and I don't know that. You know, locally, more locally, and maybe Scott has some experience or some project experience in the region, too, to be able to add to it. But locally, I know that in Grand Forks, they've gone with R513A.
13A.
At one of the rinks that had R22. Some communities just have newer systems and are just sticking with R22. For example, Thief River Falls is just sticking with R22. Bagley recently went to R449A, which is what we're using at the Civic Center. As Scott and Adam mentioned, that wouldn't apply, wouldn't be a, an option for us with the direct system at the VFW, just to name a few off.
Three to come to mind right now that we've done. One is the River Fighter Complex in Watford City, Starian Complex in Mandan, and I don't know, Scott, if you know, I think the West Fargo one we did a few years back is also ammonia system.
And the Fargo Coliseum?
Fargo Coliseum, too, yeah. So those are probably some more recent ones within, I know that's North Dakota there. I think in Minnesota, for, oh, go, sorry, Scott, go ahead.
Alexandria has changed for a moment. Most of the facilities that we do in this, Duluth and all theirs are, you know, the Duluth Entertainment Center, that's all ammonia. I don't know if you can hear him or not, but.
Yeah. I'm glad you said, started talking about Alexandria, because I was wondering if there was any of these towns that actually played hockey. Just kidding. Just kidding.
I would just, you know, from my perspective, I think we should focus on an ammonia system. I know it's the most expensive. That's unfortunate. It'd be good to know the magnitude of cost difference between the other options here with ammonia. But if we're going to reinvest in this building, keep this building, we shouldn't put in technology that could be noncompliant or old news in a few years. So that's my thought.
Can I be asked any questions? Anything to answer?
Nothing to add on the, on the ice rink piece of it, but if we move to the next part of the discussion, certainly can. Scott, before, if you jump off, just thanks for joining us. Appreciate your time tonight. So the, the second piece of it is, well, two part, it's still two part, quickly. Number one, finishing that discussion, I included in the packet kind of a larger scope around, if you added it all up, about four, four and a half million dollars. That's admittedly far more than what was discussed at the strategic planning meeting in June. We talked about there's leftover ARPA dollars around 830,000. Carla has said there's maybe a little extra fund. I don't recall exactly the detail, but maybe there's $900,000 available in city funds to be used if we wanted in these rec facility projects. The list that I included for you that adds up to about four, four and a half million, I think is all up for discussion still, if we wanted to pursue any parts of these projects in the next year to year and a half. One idea that, that Carla and I had some discussion about today is, do we seek and just reach out to Baker Tilly, the financial advisors, and see what potential rates would be on a bond of that amount to start to peck away at some of this in the short term? So curious if anybody has any thoughts on that or if there's one specific part of it that we can focus on. And then if there is a direction on the focus part of it as it relates to the, those short term priority projects, then I could start to work together with JLG and with construction engineers on bringing kind of a more updated proposal back of what it would look like to, to manage and, and be able to seek pricing on those items. So curious if there's any direction on that.
What kind of terms would be, be looking at for a bond if we wanted to try to go down that?
Please, Carla, yep.
I did just throw some numbers together. Say we wanted a bond at four million for 15 years and guess say maybe four and a quarter percent. Our payment would be 366,000 a year. That would be for 15 years. That would have to come out of our general fund.
A 15 year bond, you think?
Well, and I know if you go longer than 25, then there's a, I think it was a 75% basis point added on to the interest.
Well, I just was wondering if you go out 15 or if you try to get.
Well, and if we went out 20, it'd be 100, it'd be 320,000 a year.
I was thinking the other way, 10.
Oh, oh, yeah. And that, and I guess that was our discussion. We didn't really get hard numbers from anybody because we didn't know what direction anybody wanted to go. So, you know, that's why we were asking, you know, what would you like to see? Would you like to see four million done or six million or eight million? And then we get the parking lot and everything done, and then we come back with, you know, this will cost for 10 years. This is the interest rate. This will cost in 15 years with the interest rate. And, you know, we can have two, three scenarios, but we just need to know what you want us to get.
So say you do 10 year bond, 15 year bond, you get $4 million or $8 million, whatever you think you need, $2 million. And then we get five years into this and we go, we get the ability or, you know, legislature finally comes together and puts a tax bill together and says, yes, you can go ahead and put in a 6% sales tax, no, you know, your 1% sales tax, one and a half, whatever. Is that money like part of that? Or like, is that reimbursable to this general fund from that? Or is that, are we chopping that off of our ability to use, I guess, sales tax dollars for this?
When it be costs incurred after the sales tax is passed on?
My understanding is that it goes by the project, but that would be something we would find out for sure.
We should find out if it's.
Right.
You know, if we can do it prior to the thing. Because I, I think if it is, then that opens up some ability, I guess. I hate to, the, the negative side is, is we kind of back people into, you know, supporting a, a sales tax because we've incurred this debt and now we're going to pay for it or whatever, you know? So you wouldn't want to necessarily do it that way, but there are, there are some project costs that by really no fault of our own, because we've been waiting for the legislature to get its stuff together, I guess. You know, I could see going forward with this as long as like it's recoupable, I guess, is part of my thought.
My question, though, and my understanding when we were looking at this originally, though, but it was had to be cost incurred after we passed something, it wasn't stuff that we could recoup. Because I think that's the way the law is written, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I have had the same question, Mr. Demers, Mr. Olstead. And that's my understanding at this time, too, is that it's, we're asking on a sales tax ballot question, we're asking the voters to vote for a project that would happen if approved, not to pay off preexisting debts. I, you know, just plan to research that more and reach out and see if there is more clarification we can get, because I think it's a good question. It's valid, but that's my understanding of it at this time, too.
Well, I think there's a, there's a fiscal benefit to doing it earlier than later, too. Like, you know, I mean, granted, it, it would be after the fact, but, I mean, we, to get it done is actually probably more cost effective for.
Logical and common sense sometimes.
And that's why Reed put together what he did, so that if we had the chance to do the bigger project, we would have, you know, the necessities done and we could move forward as a rest of project with the sales tax.
And remind me, Reed, what was the original cost just to do the, all of the parking lot? Wasn't it like 1.2 million, 1.3 or more than that?
You know, it's, it's more than that now.
The original one was about 1.2, wasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I would say when we started talking about this in 2018, it was probably in that 1.2 to 1.6 area, and it's probably 2.2 to 2.6 now to reconstruct the entire, the entire parking lot. And, and the same goes for the ice plant. You know, four years ago, it was 1.6 million. Now it's 2.6 million for the ice plant at the VFW.
Strengthening your point.
You know, the one thought that I have is, we've seen what happens when there's a rush to get work done. You know, coming out of COVID and at other times when contractors are scarce and you can't get them, prices really go up, and that's really nobody's fault because they're having to scramble to hire people and, and it's really an inflationary time. Well, right now, we know that R22 is in that kind of an intermediate status, but when it starts to get shut down more, there is going to be a rush to do these projects and it's going to be really hard to line up people to do the work. So if there is this window in these next one, two years, while we can still, you know, have some latitude, now is the time to be moving on these things. I don't think we want to just slide it out indefinitely until they're actually phasing it out whenever that time comes, because you will not be able to get the work done.
How much R20, how much R22 do we have on, in the bank?
The VFW system, we think, has about 5,000 pounds in the system right now running, when the ice plant's running. We have about 2,000, 1,800 to 2,000 pounds on hand additional.
Yeah, I guess I'm interested in, you know, looking to see how we can use the ARPA dollars, you know, to invest here. And then the balance that we can't afford or isn't qualified for ARPA, package it together and high, and put a high priority on it, and then understand what is that payment as we go into the next budget analysis and start to look, can we carve out enough money in the budget to, to make our payments? Then I think we make the decision, you know, looking at the entire, the entire budget altogether. So I think it's a great idea, but we need to carry it forward and look at it holistically.
I guess the other thing to look at is, and Marty was talking about, talking to our legislators and maybe what we need to talk about the legislators or how they, you know, it wasn't just our city that's really been postponed with all these projects, but there's many. And that maybe needed to figure out how to do those local sales tax in the next legislative year and let us do that special election like we did with the swimming pool. So that might be something that we even want to talk about with the legislators, because it has pushed us, you know, every community back at least two years if this is where it's going.
That's what I was thinking also. This goes all the way back to St. Paul for some urgency.
And, and if they can't do the sales tax, then maybe they can send some grant money to help some of these communities.
Bonding money?
Or bonding, yeah.
Bonding, yeah. I have several questions. I think the biggest thing is finding out the options for bonding. Look at that.
Yeah, we'll work on that, bring some, bring some information back to future meeting. And then just the last piece of it, the third, the final one is, I do have contractors lined up to get competitive quotes on doing a mill and overlay of the frontage roads and a couple of patches at the Civic Center as it exists right now. I've got one price so far. I'm waiting on a contractor to be able to get a second competitive price. I would like to be able to bring that to the council meeting on September 6th for approval to still be able to get done with this fall using the ARPA dollars that we have. But if we did all three areas that I propose in the map that's in the packet, I'm guessing it's going to be in that 130 to 135,000 dollar area for all of that. Just food for thought now, and as we get to the next meeting, I can, I'll hopefully have two competitive bids to be able to provide to that project. Couple dollars for weed spray, too. We have sprayed the weeds a couple of times this summer. As gnarly as it looks up there, we're working on it.
One kind of a follow on question, I guess, for Carla, this fund of ARPA dollars, you know, it sounds like we're going to chip away at it for some roads and stuff here, but there's 800,000 or 900,000. Do you feel like you've got clear direction on how we want to use those dollars or is that something we need to get on a work session and figure out how we're going to spend that money?
Well, what we heard at the strategic planning was that at this point in time, let's just see what the needs were for the arena. And at this time, that's what those dollars are being used for, except the 50,000 we have planned right in this, the process right now for the lead replacement.
Okay, right.
You know, when we, we just made that decision, you know, the state of Minnesota hadn't talked about doing that and they didn't sign it anyway. So when that money comes out, we'll be done.
Got it. So just to add to that, the, the ARPA dollars, could that go to offset cost to replace the ice plant?
The ARPA dollars, what we did, we did a calculation, so it can cover any revenue recapture, they call it. So they can, we can use it for anything, basically for the city to cover those things. And, and infrastructure is a good point to do that.
Okay.
Projects are a good point. You can't, you pay off debt, you can't pay a pension or things like that. So this is a, a good route for us to do and make an investment, a one time investment that won't be recurring costs.
Okay. So those dollars could all go into our rec facilities, no problem. Do we just have to vote for it? Okay?
When you guys bring back bonding information, can you correlate that to the levy percentage or two then, just so everybody knows, so it's easier to take a look at what that's going to do annually?
And then you want 10, 10 years, 15 years?
10, 15, 20 as well.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number three, discussion in 2022 assessment, general two for utility and street reconstruction. Mr. Emery and Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to give you an update on the Fourth Street Northeast project. As you recall, when we did hold the improvement hearing on that, the city, I guess just prior to the meeting, did receive an objection letter from Olson Farms. And then there were representatives from MGI Grain and ANL Potato that were in attendance. And basically, both MGI Grain and ANL Potato kind of felt, you know, maybe the project wasn't necessary at the, at this time, maybe it was a little bit premature. I think Mr. Bushy did note, though, that the intersection of Fourth and Sixth, you know, probably needed some work there, just had some potholes and stuff. So kind of as per, you know, your direction, we did review kind of that, that corridor of street and kind of came up with, I guess, kind of an alternate project option for your consideration. So kind of our alternate project option, and I did include it in your packet, kind of a map, just to kind of help clarify it. But so the section in green on the map, that's basically the easterly, I guess, half of that corridor between Fifth and Eighth there. That section is completely, pretty much deteriorated, pretty much beyond any type of repair, maintenance type of work. So we would recommend keeping that, you know, total reconstruction. And then the area in pink there, which would be about half a block from Sixth Avenue Northeast, from Sixth Avenue East, about half a block there. What we're proposing there is basically just doing a two inch, between minutes overlay, you know, which would help fill in some of those potholes and really just probably provide for some increased life of that, that road service. And Jason did go out and get cost estimates to complete just a two inch overlay on that work. And right now, we're at about 19,600. And, you know, we're proposing, you know, maybe that, kind of like a lot of the maintenance projects Jason does, that 19,000 would not be assessed. That would just kind of come out of the, you know, his street reconstruction budget or whatever. So with that, Jason did put together, you know, just some kind of a PowerPoint, just to kind of show you what we're thinking, and you can kind of see some of the existing conditions. So I think with that, I'll just turn it over to Jason and he can kind of go through what he's put together.
Okay, so if you see the intersection here at Fourth, we're looking at, on your other map, the pink area coming from west, going east on Fourth, the intersection of Sixth, this is the one we're proposing that we would overlay then and not reconstruct. You can see it's in fairly poor condition throughout the intersection. It gets a little bit better as you go to the west. This is still the intersection here. And as you're leaving, it's, it's somewhat better, but it's still pretty terrible as you move that way. And as we move on to Seventh, it just totally falls apart. These pictures on here don't even really do it justice. As, as you move further down, I couldn't really capture how it's in this area here in the picture on the right. It's just rolly, like it's almost on a mat of water right there. It's just, as the semis and stuff drive over it, it just, you can watch the ground moving underfoot. So from, from, I'll go back to that first picture here. From this, this point down in the green here, this would be totally reconstructed. From this, this point down in the green here, this would be totally reconstructed under this proposal or recommendation. The pink area would be the overlaid area. And we could either take care of that this year with the street reconstruction funds if council wished to do so, or you can wait until this is done next year and then do this portion of it. From, from the West end of the pink stuff here to Fifth is in the best condition. It's not perfect, but it's, it's a far cry better than this. And yeah, that's, that's about it. I mean, it's just a, it's just a rough section. Oh, I guess one other thing maybe to mention is, you can kind of see and hear the, the parking lane, this is looking west towards American Crystal, is, you know, better condition than the driving lanes here. The, the north side is not, it's in poor condition. But when Steve and I discussed it, obviously, the, the subgrade there is no different than the other stuff around it. And there'd be no sense in keeping that in if we were to, if we were to totally reconstruct, because it's just, it's just going to fall apart down the road anyways. So I don't know if you have questions on the pictures or anything on the condition of it, but.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wondering, it's kind of hard to tell elevation on pictures, obviously, but, you know, like you said, that parking lane seems like it's decent. And then as you go towards the center line, it looks like it's, or the driving lanes, obviously, it falls apart pretty quickly, kind of throughout the whole thing. Just wondering what type of crown is left in that, in that section?
That far easterly?
The whole thing. I mean, obviously, the stuff on closer to Seventh is, there's nothing there. But like, as you get, you know, to this, especially, I guess, the stuff that you're proposing to overlay, like is there crown there or are you going to build crown with the?
No, the stuff we're proposing to leave, especially as you get just east of the intersection there, there's, you know, there's still crown in the roadway there. You know, yeah, as you get over towards Seventh and stuff there, there's just, you know, other than that parking lane on the south side, it's just, you know, it's totally deteriorated. And I don't know at one time if, if that parking lane was kind of, you know, redone, because it's just noticeably so much better. But, you know, again, you know, if we're reconstructing three quarters of the street, you know, that section, you know, has the same gravel base. Drainage-wise, the curb probably isn't the best. You know, just being able to redo that entire section, I think is going to be better, just in the fact too, all those contractors can approach it for paving purposes too. It's going to be much easier to do the whole road and be able to come in with a machine and just pave it as opposed to, you know, trying to leave that a little bit and then piecemeal it and all they got to almost pour, you know, do more of a hand pour type thing. So I think long-term is just better.
And then the stuff where you're proposing overlay, I mean, how much time before those cracks start reflecting through? And we're, we're sitting in the same spot we are right now.
That's, it's always a guess, a little bit when you do the overlay. I know Jason and I, and I have talked about it many times, when he did that overlay on the frontage road up there off of Highway Two, I think that was probably worse condition than this. And, you know, we're probably going on three, four years now that's, that's been in place. And yeah, you get some reflective cracking, but it's actually, it's held up real well.
Yep. And just that the, you know, the crown in this area is in pretty decent condition. Obviously, it'd be nice to totally reconstruct the whole thing, but the crown's held up in that area. There's a couple low spots, mainly in here on the north side and then kind of on the parking lane or when you come off of Sixth Avenue there, that they would put some leveling course and stuff in there. But.
Just for curiosity, is this a, a project where they would initially grind and then, then lay it on for adhesion or would it just go right over the top?
They would, they would clean it up and then they would, they would level out the areas that are sunken and then they go right over the top.
So not the full grind like you see some places?
No, not on concrete.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm making the assumption that 90% of the traffic is semi-traffic and backing in, I'm looking at especially the overlay area, that's A&amp;L's loading dock area. So the trucks are backing in there, coming out loaded and turning and twisting on a two-inch overlay. We saw what it did at Civic Center parking lot with trucks driving on it. I don't think you're going to get three years out of that two-inch overlay. I don't know if that's such a great option. I mean, if, if A&amp;L doesn't want to participate in the cost, I'm almost saying, don't even do the overlay, because I think you're just throwing your money away with all the truck traffic on there.
I mean, you bring up a good point there, yeah, with that loading dock area there and yeah, that, that truck turning movement, I mean, that will probably tear up that asphalt. You know, one thing Jason initially did talk about was, you know, just doing the overlay kind of right through the intersection and not really going east there, you know, maybe where that loading dock area is there. So, you know, I, I guess we could even scale it back a little bit to just do the overlay through the intersection and then leave the area right out in front of A&amp;L Potato, just leave that out and just leave it concrete.
I think Clarence makes a good point there though, with the, the trucks in the loading dock, but there's also, you know, they see truck traffic down Sixth as well, turning through the intersection. It wouldn't be as bad.
It wouldn't be as bad, because you're, you know, there, they're making more of a gravel turn where they're coming into those loading docks, they're making that sharp turn and it does, it will. That's a very good point.
Yep.
Mr. Elms?
Thank you. With my point of view, I would, as much as I'd like to see that pink area get fixed right away, I think that would be a mistake, because I'd be really concerned about when we, if we do the rest of that street going east, the contractor would just tear it up anyway, doing kind of the same thing that Mr. Vedder just talked about here. So I think if we were going to, if we decide we're going to fourth east a little bit mark, which obviously if anybody's been down there, it needs to be done. I mean, it's, it's horrible. Then I would recommend if we wait to do the, the, that pink part through there instead.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I would agree with the, these, these other two gentlemen here. I would just lose the overlay part, make it a full special assessment project. I think that makes the most sense. And then when that west section of road gets as bad as the east section of the road, come back for another full replacement.
Any else have anything? Mr. Johnson?
So we did, we did save these people for, with, on, in between Fifth and Sixth, correct? We weren't going to, you know, that's not going to get touched.
Correct.
And they were worried that that, that we were going to do that whole thing.
Right.
We're saving them that.
So yeah, there's, you know, like MGI, you know, with this revised project, let's say MGI wouldn't get any assessment, A&amp;L Potato's still going to get some, because they do have some property just on the west side of Seventh Avenue there. So they're still going to get some assessment, but, you know, not as much as if we would have did the whole section. So unfortunately, you know, Folsom Farm, you know, city received the objection letter from him, but just even with this revised scope of work, you know, all the property they own is everything east of Seventh and there's just nothing we can do there. I mean, it's just, it has to be redone, so.
Mayor?
One last thought on the overlay section. So much of what we do is done by petition, and I suppose we could, if people petitioned from the two sides of that and said, we want the overlay, we'd have to consider that. And not at city expense, but as a, as an assessed cost, like we do a lot of the overlay already throughout our city. We do a seal coat and then seven, eight, 10 years later, we do the overlay. So if they did petition, so if they're listening and they really wanted something done in there and petitioned for the overlay, knowing that it may not hold for too long, we'd have to sure take a look at that, I think.
Any else have anything?
Do we, do we know what the condition of the storm is under that street?
Yes, kind of. We've tried to televise it twice now, once today. And from, from where we can get into the storm, the condition, like of the pipes that we can actually see, is not too bad, but it's a really, it's a really strange area. The sizing of the pipes and how it goes in, we just, we, we can't see probably 75% of it, because there's different 90, or 45 and 90 degree bends in it. There's, the storm is actually larger, dumping into a smaller storm. And it's holding, it's holding back water right now so much that they can't even get through. So I think that'll be something that we're going to have to address as well.
Well, that's what I was wondering, I mean, if we've got this road open or should we?
It's, the storm runs.
Along the north side.
Mainly to the north side of it. But yeah, it'd be the time to do it. It's, it's in a lot worse condition, again, not, not so much the pipes, but the connections than, than we ever thought. And it's a very large pipe.
Yeah, it's a 48, the largest is 48 inch.
48 going into 36, I believe.
Or something, yeah. Kind of a goofy situation.
So then, does it terminate right there at, at Seventh? Or does it?
No, it actually goes all the way into.
That ties into Crystals?
American Crystal property there.
How's that work?
Yeah.
So don't they have to retain theirs?
It runs from into American Crystals property all the way to Fifth Avenue North.
But it drains out to Fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, we definitely need to do more investigation there. It's very unique.
Well, like I said, I'd hate to go ahead and reconstruct the street and then realize we've got to put a 48-inch storm in afterward.
Well, that's something we've been considering. We just don't really have enough data to move forward quite yet. But I think it'll probably be a total replacement of all of it. It's just such a hodgepodge of stuff going on in there that.
From Seventh all the way to Fifth, for the most part, that large storm sewer is in the north berm, so.
It is in the berm or it's in the, oh, it is, because it looks like it's under the lane, but okay. But like you said, the connections and stuff probably, that are going to this, the catches and stuff are probably under the streets and stuff, right?
Any else have any questions? Mr. Elms?
That, that field there, that's, Crystals owns that, right?
Yep, to the north, north side of.
Yeah.
Fourth, yep.
Yeah, yeah. So, so the assessment, Crystals Sugar is going to end up taking the biggest butt of that whole project, pretty much, right?
Mm-hmm.
And they know that and they're the ones that actually petitioned.
They petitioned.
To fix this.
Correct.
And that's a company that's been around here for 100 years, you know?
Right.
I think we should probably try and fix that up and what that's more concerned is their, their image there, actually, it's really, the truckers pulling their stoplights is horrible, so.
Yep.
We should really look at that. I mean, the, the ex petition, they know they're going to end up paying the biggest cost.
Correct. Yeah, yep. So yeah, so we'll proceed kind of with, I guess, the green portion of the work, the total reconstruction, and then we'll continue, continue to investigate the storm sewer and just determine exactly what we need to do there, so.
That's good. Free to move on to the next one.
Yeah, thank you.
Number four, discussion on 2023 federal project options. Emery and Stordahl.
Thank you again, Mr. President. So at the city council meeting on August 2nd, you know, you guys approved moving forward with the request to the MPO to amend the Metropolitan Transportation Plan to add six potential projects, you know, for use of the 2023 federal sub-target funds. Those six projects were included, kind of in Exhibit A. You know, these projects are really maintenance type of projects. We're looking at concrete panel replacement, curb and gutter replacement, ADA improvement work, whether it's, you know, filling in sidewalk gaps in the system, upgrading our curb ramps, putting in curb ramps. So again, just kind of a myriad of, of work there. So the first step that Jason and I did is we went out and started reviewing, you know, these streets. And after we got through about four of the six streets and just kind of realizing the amount of work that's out there, you know, we kind of decided that, you know, we should probably put together some estimates and just kind of see, you know, where we're at with everything. So that's kind of what we did. So I think, you know, maybe for right now, just so you get a little bit better feel too, I'm going to turn it over to Jason. He put together again, kind of a, some PowerPoint slides of just, you know, some of the work that we're looking at, so turn it over to you, Jason.
Yep. So like Steve said, you know, we walked the streets, we painted out some of the worst areas that, that we found. There was a lot more. You'll see areas where there's a noticeable panel or two that are busted out and, or busted up and sunken and whatnot. But, you know, maybe you don't see driving down the road, the panels that are attached that are broke up too, but just not as bad. And we found a lot of that as we went along. We looked at ADA ramps, the sidewalk, where there was gaps and stuff along sidewalk, mainly along Second Avenue, panel replacement, curb and gutter repair and sewer manhole, sewer manhole and catch basin repair type stuff. First with the ADA ramps, this is right on, right outside City Hall, obviously. And, you know, they're not compliant with today's standards. They have pavers on there, which isn't ideal as well. This picture off to the right is over on Second Avenue. It's, obviously, there's no ramps there at all for ADA. These are a couple of the crosswalks in front of City Hall. They're pretty damaged. Again, they don't like, they don't like pavers or stamped concrete in those areas. It's tough for the folks with wheelchairs and walkers and whatnot to get through. And it, and it's just generally in poor condition as well. We found some areas where there was gaps in the sidewalk. This one's just at the end, there's no approaches coming off the sidewalk on this one. This one was a gap on the west side of Second Avenue that we found, a stretch there where there was nothing. And then we had other sidewalk, this particular one was on the east side of the second, where it was just busted up to the point where if you look further, further to the south here, you can see it's just about grass there, weeds. So other sidewalk type ones where the pavers are sunk along Demers here in front of City Hall, there's water shut-off stuff, light poles, we've talked with water and light too. If we do this project or if we don't, you know, the frosts has jacked these poles up, so they're looking into possibly redoing these lights, light bases. There's electrical boxes that are shifted and busted up along there and just a lot of tripping hazard type stuff. It doesn't show up too great on this slide here, but, you know, the sidewalks broke up. There's not a huge tripping hazard in some of these right now, but, but, but they are in pretty poor condition, right, right in front of our City Hall here. The panel replacement stuff, this is kind of a bunch of the different streets. There's sunken panels on Fifth, just large cracks and whatnot. We have sanitary and storm manholes that are busted up around all of them. Our practice now is that when we want to repair these, what happens is the, the catch basin barrels, the manhole barrels, they're deep in the ground and they don't move, but the street moves with the frost and it breaks up around these. So we, we use a chimney seal system, so the manhole top is tied in with the concrete and can float with the street and there's still a seal to the manhole. So, so you don't have them breaking up so bad like, like some of these. This one off to the right is in one of the intersections along Second, I believe is at Ninth. The intersection at Ninth and Eighth are pretty rough, pretty rough conditions. Storm sewers, same thing here. It, this one didn't have a chimney seal on it. And we also had an area, this here too, you can't really see that great, this is on Second for, it's for a block. They did some utility work back. They did some utility work back, um, quite a number of years ago, prior to me being here. In the center of the street, there is no crown, it's like an inverted crown along this whole section here. And the picture doesn't do it justice either, but if you drive down there, you'll see that a lot of these panels are starting to get really busted up and the water just kinda sits in the center, so. These are just some of the things that we found as we, as we walked and, and marked out these areas. Um, it was a lot more, and when we looked at the map after it was all GPSed and, um, it was even surprising to us after walking there, just how big an area, especially along Fifth, was really in really poor condition, so. Any questions, I guess, on the?
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stewart Hall, you got that, is, is there a picture in here of that, uh, spot right over here, uh, right back here with, uh, Sixth and Central Avenue?
No.
Big area there?
No.
That's been, that was all asphalt in here, and that's, that's, that, that intersection is horrible, you can't even drive, you can't even swerve, miss the holes anymore, they're getting so bad, so.
Yeah.
If that one there could be fixed up, and that wouldn't be too bad, cause they could kinda fill those holes in a little bit, put a little overlay on there, just kind of a circle, and that would be pretty nice shape there then again. Uh, and then I noticed, uh, over there on Fifth Avenue by, between, uh, North Dale and Ryan's where that big hump was, I see they finally put some, uh, bump signs there, but, uh, I see that concrete is starting to bust up a little bit there now too, and that hump is just starting to bust out of there, so.
Yeah.
And I got a feeling when these beat trucks get done, it's gonna be a lot worse.
Yep.
So there's a lot of, and that Fifth, we know, going north there, uh, is, is one road that's been in dire need for repairs for many years, so if we can get some of them things done, uh, I think that'd be, you know, probably people were trying to move in the right direction anyway.
Yeah.
Sure.
The one on Sixth, uh, the reason that that's not on there is just because it's not state aid or federally road, but um, I am actually waiting on estimate to get that done, to do an edge mill around the edge of it, and then fill in those spots and do an overlay in that, in that intersection, so hopefully that will be done this year. It's a pretty bad area, we, we're gonna try to get it filled, just have, um, a contractor come in and just fill in the pod holes, but it's just so great, there, it's it, something more, more substantial has to be done there, so.
Where?
It's right on Central at Sixth and Central.
Big intersection right off the, from where the old middle school was here. I think it's, I think it's actually Sixth comes in one way and Second comes in one way and Central.
Yeah.
Right in that corner.
Yeah. Should put a roundabout there.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
So, I'll leave that as a footnote. Um, wondering what's the difference in these two estimates? One is double the other one, the one that's in our packet is double.
Yeah, so, so what we did, um, you know, again, Proposal One and Proposal Two, um, is work on Fifth Avenue, Northeast.
On either side.
Um, you know, those two corridors, you know, the work really consists mainly of concrete panel replacements, some curb and gutter, and, you know, very little ADA work, so. So as we put together these estimates, um, you know, we realized too, that, you know, we're not gonna be able to do everything. So what we did on Proposal Three, which is Demers Avenue, and then Proposal Four, Jason and I kinda looked at it and kinda prioritized, um, you know, maybe what, if we can't do everything, you know, what could we do? To at least, uh, you know, make some good improvements in those areas, so. So like on Proposal Three, um, if you look at that, you know, one of the areas is where the railroad tracks kinda come through there on Demers Avenue, we, you know, a bunch of concrete panel replacement there. Um, as you go along there, all of the intersections, we'd, you know, complete upgrades um, to the ADA ramps, get those ADA compliant. Then right out in front of City Hall, you know, we would take care of the stamped concrete crosswalk areas. And even the, you know, the sidewalk right out in front of City Hall, where the paver is in such a really bad condition, you know, we'd take care of some improvements in that, those areas.
So it's just the yellow?
Yep, so that's on your map, it's, you know, kind of the yellow highlighted areas. So like when you look at our original estimate from Proposal Number Three, you know, just looking at construction, we were at about nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in construction. If we look at Proposal Number Three, kind of the high priority areas, you know, we reduce that construction amount down to about four hundred and nineteen thousand, so a reduction of roughly five hundred thousand. And then if you look at, like over on, uh, Second Avenue, Northeast, which is Proposal Number Four, again, if you look at the maps, what we kinda focused out on there was, um, redoing the intersections, all of the intersections are really tough shape, and then doing, um, basically the, the ADA ramps at those intersections. And again, with Proposal Four, you know, we originally, in our estimate, we were pretty much figuring completing, um, or replacing all of the sidewalk, I mean, that entire corridor, that sidewalk is in really tough shape, but then, you know, kinda prioritizing everything, you know. We went from, I gotta find my, so Proposal Four, as we originally proposed, we were at about one point one million in construction. Proposal Four prioritizing, we're down to about five hundred and ninety-two thousand, so again, about a five hundred thousand dollar savings, so. So with Proposal Three and Four, you know, we reduced the cost, you know, roughly a million dollars. So, um, again, just, so as a kind of a reminder for you, you know, we do, we are gonna get about eight hundred and sixty thousand in federal sub-target funding, it's an eighty-twenty split. So there's a twenty percent match, so we need about a one point one million dollar construction project to get the full eight sixty, which I think we wanna maximize. So what I, you know, what I looked at is, um, like options One and Two, if we did just those two, we're at about eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, so again, we're not at the one point one million. If we did One, Two, and Three, the projects that we prioritized on Three, we're at about one point two million. And then if we did One, Two, Three, and Four prioritized projects, we're at about one point eight million. So again, you know, we're gonna have to decide ultimately what we wanna all do, where the money's gonna come from. You know, again, we're gonna get eight hundred and sixty thousand in federal sub-target dollars. I did include in the packet, um, our state aid allocation balance. You know, we're currently at about little over a million dollars. Um, of that, we're gonna use probably around three hundred thousand for the HOCS system, three hundred and sixty thousand, or no, about three hundred thousand. And then we do receive, on an annual basis, we do receive about three hundred and sixty-six thousand, so you know, we do have some work coming up in twenty twenty-four with, uh, the traffic signal replacement project on Demers Avenue and Second, and Demers and Fourth, you know, in about four hundred and fifty thousand, but as you kinda look through that spreadsheet, you know, we do have a pretty good balance in there, so I think we have some state aid monies that we can utilize um, for this project too. Yeah, I don't think we're stuck with just, you know, our federal sub-target dollars, so.
So is there any benefit to just working on, say we didn't do a priority and we just did one or the other to get it all done, to, you know, you wouldn't have a mold between the two, you wouldn't, you know, you just focus on one instead of trying to have construction on two major, major corridors at the same time and jumping across Avon Hall to her. Would there be a benefit to just doing all the Demers, or doing all the Second, or just doing all the Fifth and getting that done? Instead of hodgepodge, and then in four years when we can't get our federal job, project done again, we come back and do this, the other pieces, or what?
Um, I don't know, I mean, the advantage of I, I see of approaching it the way we do, we are at least addressing, you know, a lot of the issues, whether it's Demers Avenue or Second Avenue. You know, cause if we, you know, if we don't take care of some of those high priority areas now, you know, I don't know where we're gonna find the dollars to do them later. You know, again, I think right now, we're doing what we want, basically on One and Two. I mean, we're doing everything that we've identified. It's just a matter of, on Three or Four, you know, if we decided we wanna do all of Three, then we just need to, you know, figure out where the money's gonna come from too.
And so when you guys put the high priority, that's just the high priority for that, it's not high priority overhaul for the projects? Is that correct?
Correct.
It's not. So if it was up to Jason, which of the, if you had Per Blas checked or right however you could do it, which would be your priority?
Just how we had them on the list, so if, if we had
So Fifth.
Option Fifth, One and Two, just because it's a highly traveled road and it's pretty rough shape, and then, um, and then just go down the list, like Second and Demers, um, the priority areas that we have outlaid are, um, you know, like the intersections, the center of Second, stuff like that, those railroad tracks that are now busting up. Some of the bad points on Demers, I think it would be beneficial to get them done. If we had to come back and get the less prioritized stuff on Second and Demers, we could probably, even if we use street reconstruction for a panel here or two, or a little bit of sidewalk, we could probably get that done, but but those are some pretty bad areas, those prior, you know, the ones that we prioritize within the Second option and the Demers option.
So if you did the One and Two priorities, I'm gonna look back just so I know my numbers, so you're saying there's three hundred thousand and five fifty, so eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of construction costs, right?
Yep.
So I'm gonna kick the hornet's nest, I suppose, here. So what's gonna happen, or how would that be affected if we chose to assess these properties like we typically assess state aid project properties at thirty percent? Now granted, a lot of this is institutional, it's the city's properties, it's whatever, but to me, when you look at this, this is, this, this is as much reconstruction as anything we do on a mill and overlay, or a seal coat, or anything, and we go out of our way to make sure that those people are assessed for that type of stuff. This is, this is on par with whatever we've done for, in those areas, so I think that we should figure out how much the assessment would be to these properties, which would buy down at least a portion of these projects, and maybe you could get Proposal One, Two, and Three done, or whatever, so, um, or maybe Four, I don't know. I guess my thought is, and like I said, maybe I'm kicking the hornets' ass and people are gonna be ticked off that we're even raising this, but this is a definite disparities that we've done. Now, I can see, like, we, we haven't assessed concrete replacement when, like Jason said, like, when we replace a panel here or something, when it's strictly a maintenance fix, but this is, like I said, it's on par with doing a mill and overlay, it's on par with doing a seal coat in an area. I mean, you look at these streets, how purple they are, it's basically a redo of the street. If it isn't assessed, if I was on an asphalt street and someone comes in and tells me I have to be assessed to do a seal coat or a mill and overlay, I would come in here screaming my head off and I wouldn't leave. So I, I just, I, I think that needs to be part of the, the calculation, for two reasons. Number one, it's the right thing to do, number two, it actually can get, generate more money to get more work done, so.
If this is gonna go before the MPO in September, you're never gonna get any of that done, you might as well just push the money away. Because you're not gonna be able to do a special assessment project, get it out there, um, by the time you're gonna put these two projects for the MPO.
Why, why do we have to have the assessment role and all that done before we put it on the tip, or on the?
Will be dependent upon if you're gonna?
You have to present the projects you're gonna do, so if you don't know if you're gonna do Two or Four, then you have to wait until you know what you're gonna do before you ask for that amendment.
Well, we better figure out pretty quickly how much we're gonna generate from assessing the thirty percent, that's our policy for pavement replacement.
We could do that, we're at, at this point, let's say, I mean, you're gonna have to do a report of feasibility, you're gonna have to hold an improvement hearing, you're gonna have to start that whole process.
But you don't have to have that done before you decide what you're gonna do. I mean, you should be able to calculate what the assessment role is on these streets pretty quickly, and then say that's how much money we have extra, or, like I said, if you look at Fifth and you, you're looking at eight hundred thousand, say thirty percent of that, which it's not gonna be, say it's fifteen percent of that, is ex, you know, is gonna come in from additional revenues. So what does that do? Does that allow us to do, think about doing another project, adding state aid dollars in?
Can you take out parks and other city lands?
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's not gonna be thirty percent like a typical residential, but maybe it's fifteen, maybe it's ten, I don't know, but we need to do the calculation, I think.
It's gonna be a little trickier, cause how do you assess Second Avenue, I mean?
Just the way you would on a
You, you might as well just assess every prop? I mean, are we gonna assess, are we gonna assess those people between Sixth and Seventh at a separate rate? Then the piece, people between Fifth and Sixth, I mean, are are you just gonna take your entire project cost and just spread it through every property between Tenth and Business Highway Two?
Sure. I, I mean, that's where the project starts and ends, I mean, they're getting the benefit from the whole thing, it's not, it's not just the pavement in front of their house. It's what I've been telling people for fifteen years, it's the whole thing. And it's just like, I mean, like I said, a mill and overlay, like, you don't do the bottom half of the, the asphalt, you just do the top, like, you're paying them for, they're paying for the whole thing, so, I don't know, I just.
It's a council decision, I guess.
I mean, I don't know, like you said, I don't know what the timelines look like, but that's that's a different question, I guess. If we're gonna do this, like I said, we're setting a pretty big precedent here by going ahead and doing this without even considering it, in my opinion, because like I said, we, we, we actively, uh, pursue assessment for, um, those other projects, and they're no different than these ones.
Yeah, um, just, I spent some time driving these roads, kinda grouped these three areas together, uh, Fifth, Demers, and Second, just trying to get like a ranking in my head, and it was helpful to hear others as well. Oh, excuse me. Second Avenue, I think, was the lowest prof, or the lowest priority for me, I just thought like, you know, that's when you rank them together, I think that was at the bottom, then that left Demers in Fifth, Demers versus Fifth. Fifth's in really rough shape, you know, I don't see a fix for that in the future. This is an opportunity to address a lot of just destroyed pavement, we gotta fix that intersection just south of Highway Two, where the beat trucks are just wrecking it, so. What I would recommend or like to see is a project that focuses on Fifth, uses up this state aid, so one point one million dollar on Fifth Avenue, hit all the high-profile areas, and try and minimize some of the, this kind of scattered little panel here, panel there. Focus on big chunks of replacement, where we can get decent unit costs in our bids, and then, um, I think we'll have a successful project, and then we can put Fifth behind us. That's, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Bender?
Thank you. I find it is interesting, we just talked about Fourth Street by American Crystal, and you didn't wanna do panel replacements, but the parking lane was perfectly fine, but let's tear it out because we'll get better prices. I know all these projects that we're looking at for this particular item, it's all panel replacements, there is hardly anywhere they're gonna be able to use their machine. Uh, it's all gonna be hand pour and more expensive. I'm kinda with Mr. Larson that let's do something that's more grander scale if we're gonna do this. I'm also with Mr. Demers that we do need to have special assessments in there. So if you wanna pick Fifth, if you wanna pick Demers, if you wanna pick Second, I don't care which one, but you figure out the total cost and do it all, you take the one point two million for, uh, federal dollars and our city match, and the rest and the rest gets special assessed out to everyone, just as we normally would do with any other project. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Johnson.
Isn't that, Demers, is it, is Demers state aid or not? Isn't that a state aid vote?
It's on our state aid system, yes.
Well, then that should, that the...
All of these are.
Then there shouldn't be no assessments on the state aid.
We assess our state aid 30%.
What is?
It's 30 or 25?
30.
30.
I think it says state aid reconstruction. I don't, when I think reconstruction, I figure complete...
It's not a new road, so it's existing, you're redoing, redoing it.
But, like I said, we do the same. We, state aid, mill and overlay, state aid, seal coats. We, we surely assess the 30%.
I think, I, I mean, I liked the discussion. I think Brian, Mr. Larson brought a good point of looking at Fifth and redoing that. I know that was the top of the list of doing that, but also I think we need to do it properly, the way we've done it all the time, too, with looking at the assessments. So, in my mind, I think Fifth, do it, do it right, I guess, get it done, because that is a really bad road, so.
My thought is, too, is with the assessment, we could either use that to extend the diff, additional scope on a different street, or you could potentially use that as your, as your match, right? I mean, could you use that to, to match the, the federal funds? I mean, those would be considered...
A local match for the sub-target dollars.
Right.
You're not using assessments for that?
Yes.
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah, so like I said, so you could use that as your, as your match if you didn't want to expand the scope beyond Fifth.
Just remember one thing, too, when we did Seventeenth, you know, issue we might have.
Right. But this, but the difference with this is it's a 30% assessment instead of 100%. I thought about that, too.
Mr. Gant.
It's a little easier.
I know we've done projects when we had access to some federal dollars. We've done projects along, around Riverside Christian School 10 and 20 years ago, in which we had access to some federal dollars, and they were done 100% paid for with those funds, without any special assessments. I know it's been done over the last 10 to 20 years. And so it's not like there is no precedent for that when we have unique access to funding, you know, a finite span of time. Not saying how we should do it, but I will say that it's been done when we have had federal dollars.
Maybe else have any directions?
Carla.
I guess my question on this is that we just have construction dollars, and then, just so that there's explanation, too. And then the soft costs, we have budgeted to come out of the state aid maintenance fund. So everybody knows that there's soft costs addition to the 1.2, or whatever the project number is, that there are soft costs, and that we have that budget out of the state maintenance fund. And I guess the other thing I wanted to just add to that, if you're kind of done with that, is that we're talking about mill and overlay, and that Steve and I have discussed that, and that it's about time to do that, the whole city again. So in that, I think we have, like, in the next three to five years, that we're looking at that. And last time we did that, the city's share was 1.2 million dollars, so we're kind of looking at 2.48 that we're also going to have to pay, start looking at doing in probably about five years.
One correction, the soft costs are in there.
Oh, I just want to make sure that, because it's a construction stuff. So I just want to make sure that we all knew that, that that's the whole project includes soft costs.
Federal dollars can't be used for engineering, that type of stuff. We have to have 1.1 million in construction dollars to get the full 860, right?
So, project dollars, not construction dollars, project dollars.
For the fed, the federal dollars, the sub-target dollars can only be used for construction.
Right.
Can't be used for engineering, anything.
So it'd be 80% of the construction could, is what the federal will pay.
Right.
So.
Correct.
So the project has to be up to this amount to get the 860 of construction. Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we all know that, because in other terms, we talk about construction, we haven't put the soft costs in it, so.
Are you telling us you're going to do a job for free for us, then? Is that your plan?
No. I mean, all of the costs are figured in the costs you have.
Project costs.
Right.
Construction and soft costs is in the project.
And right now, for engineering, administration, legal contingencies, I've just used 25% right now as a, as a starting number. You know, I got 10% construction contingencies built in, and...
Bring it down. I think there's a consensus, I don't know if maybe anybody else wants to make a comment. I mean, to look at one section and do that, stick with that. And I think Fifth has been, came up. I know Clarence said he didn't have a particular one, but... On this stuff.
Yeah, Fifth and then all the high priority items. Fifth and then pick off your highest priorities, in the big chunks.
Yeah.
And I think, I mean, that's kind of what we did, especially on, on Second, is, you know, those higher priority areas are, you know, large areas, your intersections, your inverted driving lanes on Second there. So, again, I think that's what we did with the high priority areas. We did try to eliminate, you know, just the small panel replacement here and there.
So is the direction, and are we moving ahead with one, two, three, and four?
Well, I thought we were looking at Fifth.
Fifth.
Fifth only? And then pick off your high priority items to the dollar that we need.
So if, just looking at it right now, so one and two is Fifth Avenue Northeast. We're at about 824,000 in construction. So if we do just those areas, we may not get to the 1.1 million.
And your high priority items from the others, to get to that number.
Okay.
That's not what I heard.
That's... No, I, I guess maybe I'm reading these charts wrong, and I'm not fully following the breakdown. But let's just do a big job on Fifth, and replace as much bad concrete out there as we can, do some full width paver pulls, and let's invest in Fifth Avenue with this project, is what I'm trying to say.
To total reconstruction.
Yes, yeah, well, where it makes sense, right? You know, get, get rid of the little single panels on here. I understand why they were marked, because they're bad areas. But let's, let's invest in making the biggest improvement we can in Fifth Avenue Northeast, both sides of Highway Two, and we can be done with Fifth Avenue.
As a reminder, Steve, I know in past, there's a difference between state aid streets and federal aid streets, because federal aid streets are less, they're a higher classification. And oftentimes, when you're using sub-target dollars or federal dollars, you need to consider bike and pedestrian facilities while you're at it. So if you're doing Fifth, that might be something that you'll have to look at, is sidewalks and/or curb cuts and things like that, so.
Yeah, and on Fifth, there's basically nothing right now.
Particularly if you're going to do more of a reconstruct, so.
Is there a sidewalk on the, on the west side? Just on the east side, nothing on the other side?
Yeah.
Right, and then we've got our, yeah, so I mean, that, that could be good.
Yeah, we did look at those, those things.
Yeah, yeah. Just, just because, you know, with the MPO, I know when they do their priority and classification, and same with Minda, they usually look to see if you're meeting complete streets or you're at least considering it. At least they did before, when I worked for the MPO, that was a big consideration. So I don't want to do a bunch of projects, only to have them come back and say, have you considered sidewalks? Or something like that, and then have to add that to the project.
Um, let's, let's once more circle back on the question of, do we really want to add more to Fifth and really focus it, all of our dollars there? You know, basically do more panels, more of this, more of that, and not be able to get at some of these other priorities? Are we going to regret that? Where we have big chunks of intersection on these other areas that would not be done, and I don't know how they would be done in the next while, if we don't do them now? So I guess I'd like to just have that, that thought one more time. Now, put the project behind us. We've basically taken out some panels on Fifth that initially we thought were okay. We could leave them, they're good, they're solid, they're square, they're plumb, they're true, they're not broken up. We could really work around those and leave them. But now we're going to take them out to make more of a contiguous pavement replacement, and not do these other areas. I wouldn't prefer it myself. I would prefer to do what they've identified as being deficient, and then do those bigger areas as this project.
Mr. Bender.
Thank you. In, in answer to the mayor, none of these projects outside of maybe Fifth, because we have talked about Fifth in the past, but none of these other projects were never a high priority, quote, unquote, until the roundabout got kicked out. And then you, mayor, asked to go out and, let's find what other projects we can spend money on. And lo and behold, Demers and Second became a high priority area now. So no, they're not a high priority. They're just a project that we can spend money on, because we need to spend money on.
Well, take a look at them, they're very broken up. Everything identified here is in terrible shape.
I understand, I drive them every day.
And the question then is, how do we fund it if not now? Where do we get the funds?
We never questioned how we were going to fund it before the roundabout came off. So I'm not concerned about any of those areas at this point in time.
You know why the roundabout came off is these other priorities are greater. Tenth is greater, these are greater.
No.
And that's been my point the whole time. The roundabout is a good project. It's going to be great, it'll function well. It's not our highest priority expenditure at this time. That's been my position the whole time.
Yep, I understand that. It's still yours.
And I think, look at the, the community meeting that we had. That place blew up and said, what are you doing? Why are you spending money on this when we have all these other needs?
And you know, mayor, as soon as you call one of those community meetings, you're going to have the naysayers come out. There are tons of people, and there were some at that meeting that didn't feel comfortable supporting the roundabout.
I totally get that.
Because of the, the atmosphere there.
There are absolutely pros and cons to this.
So, and if you look back, the majority on the council voted for a roundabout. It was just the political posturing that got the roundabout off.
It was a four-four tie.
There aren't four, or eight council members.
There's one more that gets to break a tie.
There wasn't a tie. It was four to three.
Then it was three, three.
I understand. And like I said, political wrangling got the roundabout off. But the majority of the council wanted a roundabout.
And now maybe they don't.
But we'll never know.
We kind of do.
You might know in your mind.
So my question for Steve and Jason, proposals number one and two, which includes Fifth on both sides of the highway there. Or is that what you're asked, saying on both sides of the highway, too?
Yeah.
I want to clarify it.
Yeah, that's exactly it, on both sides where the bad areas are. I just, I'm, I'm sure that there's enough work out there that we can make a good investment out there and have one big project. From my background in construction, we're going to save a lot more money having one large, efficient project, large contractor, large equipment, rather than multiple bids, multiple mobilizations, smaller tiki-tack work. So it's in our best interest to get the most bang for our buck, invest in one project. That's, that's my thoughts.
Very responsible. So... I mean, if we, I, I can tell you right now, if you start looking at, with what I'm hearing from you, if we're going to look at total street replacement, then, you know, we're maybe going to get from Fifteenth to Twentieth done, and that's all we're going to get done, if we're looking at total street reconstruction.
I don't think we are.
Yeah, that's not what I'm referring to. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to answer the question, and the words aren't necessarily coming out. But, you know, what I'm trying to say is, let's invest in one spot. I, I know there's more work in here than, than being shown. Nancy had good comments about, are we missing sidewalks, or is, is lighting poor? Is there things out here we can do?
I think what you're seeing here on Fifth Avenue Northeast, I mean, Jason and I identified, I think, everything for the most part that we thought needed replacement. The stuff that's not shown is really still pretty good. So on Fifth Avenue Northeast, on either side of Highway Two, I wouldn't expand our scope of work really at all. I, I think we've identified the project. So do you agree, Jason?
I do, um, to a certain extent, but I might, see, I'm just going to go up there and point it out. The, uh, maybe this is what you're saying, Brian, is like, so on this section here, instead of doing what's outlayed there, what if we cut it off here and here and make the whole section?
Right.
Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, get rid of these shapes.
Maybe do the same thing there, and just take bigger, full bid section, and sidewalk where we need.
Yeah, and, you know, is there utility work that needs to happen? That's going to require some more pavement to be replaced?
Yes.
You know, like, let's look at this as one big project, but let's get one big contract with one big contractor and maximize our investment here.
Do we know what the utility condition is on Fifth?
For the most part? Sanitary storm, for the most part?
Kind of.
I should have answered that.
You didn't have it televised this year, is what I mean. You know, it's, um, it's in pretty good condition from what, from what we see, you know. There's some surface-type stuff that needs to be fixed, obviously, around those manholes and catch basins, but the underground is...
But that stuff that gets taken care of, some of those panels.
Yes. We would obviously double-check that before we went in there and, and did these sections again. But our televising from before shows that it's in pretty decent shape.
Yeah. Part of me agrees with Mr. Larson. I think, you know, you, you try to chunk it out. But at the same time, like, I've driven down here, and I feel like there's a lot of white paint out there that pretty, pretty effectively lines out where the problems are. Um, no, is it, you're not going to get a, you know, a big concrete paver in there and walk down the street. But, um, but yeah, I don't know. My thought is, after thinking, I guess I kind of raised that question at the beginning, too. It's like, well, do you just do one? But I think you should probably, when you look at the numbers, probably do one, two, and the full three. I mean, that gets you into about 1.26 in construction cost?
Yeah, I, I figured 1.24, yeah.
So then you're doing Fifth and Demers, which are your three highest priorities.
Yep.
You're getting, and that's where I was coming out. I was thinking more on the conglomerate with the high priorities. I felt like we're, yeah, we're doing those big blocks, but like, if we're there, why don't we just do it instead of having these small patches that are coming out, and we're going to have to come back in five years and do the same thing to do them? I guess that would be my thought right now. I'm, I'll probably have a different thought in 20 minutes, but, um, is to look at doing Fifth, both sides. And to Nancy's point, the nice thing about doing that is there's about $450,000 of ADA and, you know, other projects that are in, especially the Demers portion of that, that will point out better in this process. Granted, I mean, state of good repair is high priority. Um, obviously, that, this matches that, or whatever, but, you know, that ADA component, I mean, granted, you don't, if you don't have to do it, like, it's, it should be a, you shouldn't be penalized because you don't have that need, or whatever, but this does do a lot to that ADA sidewalk, um, alternative transportation, um, projects.
On the other.
Kind of thing, too. So I don't know, I mean, it might cost us a little bit more than the 1.1, but it maximizes our match, it gets two giant projects done. It probably has a high potential. And then I guess, like I said, if you can offset either the soft costs or some of the match with assessment dollars, I think that's the best we can hope for.
Yeah, and I mean, we do have, I mean, you know, we go over that, we're, if we're in that 1.2, 1.3 million dollar, or, I'm sorry. Yeah, if we're in that 1.3, 1.4 million dollar range, I mean, we have enough money in our state aid account, too, so the money's there. I mean, we're, between the federal sub-target or state aid allocations, we have adequate funding. And then if you want, we can look at assessments.
But I guess I would appreciate staff looking at timelines and see what kind of timelines we would have to hit if we are going to do a project like this. Can, I mean, can we identify this as our project and then go down the assessment row?
Yeah, I mean, that's what, if, if I'm, that's what I was thinking about here, is I, if, I'm just, off the top of my head there, I don't know that there's, I'm not aware of a requirement saying that for us to ask for...
saying that for us to ask for that to be amended, that we have to have it all one hundred percent worked out how we're totally funding it. So I mean, as far as going forward, asking for, for the, that a plan to be amended, I think we can, I believe we can do that and then figure out, work on the, the assessment process after that until, up until we would do the project.
The only thing I would say with that is I know that we've had projects in the past that have gone down to ATP or whatever, that they've made the claim that, well, the city doesn't have money to pay for it, or whatever. It wasn't, it wasn't this type of a project, but we've had projects that come down, and they've said that, and then we got to-
Well, I mean, I guess, maybe we're not, we wouldn't be saying we don't have money paying for it. We'd be paying for it one of, really one or two. We just haven't identified which pot we're going to take it out of. Are we going to assess it all, or are we going to pay for it out of this? I mean, so I would, I would, at that point, I guess I would argue that we have a funding, it's funded, we just haven't fully decided which way we're funding, yeah.
Yeah, you, you don't have to know how you're going to fund it, you just have to guarantee that your local match is going to be there to pay for it. How that local match is determined is completely up to the city, so.
Tim? And I, I understand Mr. Demers' point of grabbing another project and doing Demers, I get that, I mean.
Just to, just to clarify what you were saying there, Mr. Demers, is you were recommending proposal one, proposal two, and then proposal four ADA?
Proposal three-
Which is way up.
Of the high priority. Of, no, of the whole thing. The one that's in the packet.
Proposal three, you're saying Demers.
Nine hundred and forty-five thousand, one point one million?
Well, proposal three-
Oh, I'm sorry, proposal three ADA.
Proposal three with the ADA, oh wait, just the ADA, I'm sorry.
Or just the ADA, maybe, I don't know, I mean.
If you look at their high priority, what did that bring you down to? Oh, that's a hundred and twenty-two. I guess we could do it either way.
The original proposal three, if we did all of the sidewalks, essentially along that, more or less along that entire corridor, we were at nine hundred and forty-five thousand. If we did just the high priority areas, we were at about four hundred and nineteen thousand.
That's what I was thinking of, the high priority.
Yeah, okay.
Is she happy with that?
Is she, Brian?
Yeah, sorry.
She's happy.
Yeah, not that.
Let's pretend I was looking at this the whole time.
So, well, I got, I got them mixed up, too, myself when I was recording, so like I said, it's, it's not four hundred thousand of ADA, it's a hundred and twenty-two.
Yeah, go with that.
So it's four hundred thousand for a project on that, plus the eight hundred and sixty, so then you're at one point two.
Correct.
Mr. Repel?
So what he said originally was do one, two, and three, with three being the paper we were given tonight, and that brought us to the one point two.
Yep.
Covered our tail on getting the poll.
But now we feel good about it, because we've talked about it.
Yeah, you just didn't hear it, you didn't, you didn't hear it at all.
I heard it, I love it.
I heard it, and I wrote it down.
So you're saying Steve said that originally?
Yeah.
Isn't he like an engineer or something?
Because you're going to do, not the panel replacements, you're going to hit blocks of total reconstruction.
Big chunks.
And the price will increase, but we're going to have special assessments to help offset some of that, so we'll-
Yes.
Special assessments, you can do more.
So some of that work on Fifth, you know, maybe some of those real big areas, where all we're leaving is one parking lane, you know, maybe we would just take that parking lane, because then they could almost come in there with like a bridge deck paver and just pave the whole thing.
The prices might be the-
Right, we might get better pricing.
Better prices anyway.
Right.
So we might need more.
Might be a wash.
Well, could you do an alternate, I guess, and figure out what the price is, or is that not a good idea?
Especially if we're doing special assessments, you might, might, might need more, just because-
Yeah, but you're not going to get, I mean, you might get fifteen percent.
Well, but special assessments can still be our twenty percent match, too, so, yeah, leave it at that.
That's what I mean, it's like you have, if you assess the whole thing thirty percent, but then you're only probably going to maybe assess half of it, you know, so fifteen percent, ten, fifteen percent is what you're going to generate, so a hundred and twenty thousand.
It's a full street improving district.
So I think the direction I'm hearing is one and two and high priority on three, that is basically going to be our project.
Yes.
Yes, again.
Okay. Just to clarify, I didn't want no confusion.
Well, you said an hour ago.
In the words of Jason, maybe.
What's that?
In the words of Jason, maybe.
I think it's a kind of, somewhere.
Kind of.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Move on to the next one, please. We're going to skip number six, I guess, number five is being pulled, number six, review of 2023 budget summary, Carla.
Okay, the last update I sent to, put in the dollars I got from the departments, I'm still waiting from, some, some more from one department, but right now, to get the revenue and expenditures and the fund balance to zero or close to zero, it's at twenty-two percent. So I know you're all thrilled to hear about more money to spend. The reason that number five was pulled is because we talked with Mike, and Mike has decided to postpone that purchase of the UTV. It came in a little higher than he had planned, and we're looking at having those savings to use for, keep enough fund balance to use for next year. So thank you, Mike, that helps a little bit. So we are trying to look at ways to cut down on some expenses. I guess, you know, we probably need direction from you, if there's any places that you are looking at that we could do changes to or not, but when I get expenses from the other department, it'll be a little closer, but I would guess this is pretty close to the ballpark. I use the expenses that we had in, for those years, so we don't have some increases for some items, though, or special events in that department.
Mr. Murphy?
And one thing I think Carla was maybe not mentioning to report is there is some good news to this, so maybe she didn't want to steal that, but there is some good news that we do have, we don't know what it's going to be yet, but we do have some promising feedback here for the health insurance. That might, that might help, so, yeah, that's not all worked out yet. We should have something here in the next few weeks where we can have maybe some hard numbers on it, but it's looking like it, it could be significantly less, so.
That is good news.
That is some, some good news.
So what percentage did you use of increase in the budget right now?
For health insurance?
Is it the fifty?
Fifty percent. That's what you put in there, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
So when we get those numbers updated, we'll have them on our next, the next meeting. And then just a reminder that we need to have a preliminary levy done by the meeting on September twentieth. So that's just a preliminary. Then we would send that to the county, we'd come up with our tax entreesation dollars that we know, an estimate for property owners, too, just so that everybody kind of remembers the process.
I'm sorry, what was the date on that?
September twentieth.
Twentieth, got it.
At that council meeting, needs to approve the preliminary levy.
Just to kind of give you guys perspective, you know, running some numbers, if you want to, you know, you're going to look at cutting stuff, and you thought it'd be great to look at, you know, getting down to a certain percentage, I mean, even at twelve percent, you're looking at cutting five hundred and forty thousand dollars. I mean, it's quite a bit, I mean, it's, so, I mean, it's just something we need to think about. I mean, you look at, you know, expenditures and uses, you know, the percentages of that right now is mostly because of the, it's health insurance.
And wages. Health insurance, they're always great, yeah.
Exactly, but right now, I mean, it'd be good to see what that does here, but right now, you, you look at three of the departments, it makes up sixty percent of that expenditures, and so, but I guess we're going to have to, hopefully have good news on the health insurance, because that might help us get down to where we need to get down. Like I said, if you want a twelve percent levy, you're cutting five hundred and forty thousand dollars as it sits here today in front of us.
Yep.
I don't suppose any of the department heads want to volunteer cutting any of their staff?
Probably not.
Unless you want to take the complaints.
Well, we're going to take complaints, I guarantee it, if we put out what we think we're going to put out.
Services, of services.
Guarantee it, we're going to take complaints.
Anybody else have anything, or not, or? Nothing? Entertaining motion adjourned? Do by Johnson? Given by Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned.